Item 14, Stage 3 Drought Update.
Ms. Stier again, hello.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hagmark is in Spain this week, so I have the pleasure of giving the drought update this month. Start with the drought status, the demand status, and the water supply status. And then, review the water supply strategy, which we had a discussion on back in March. Give you an update on drought funding and water conservation. This is from the County of Santa Barbara's website. It's rainfall for the water year starting September 1st, which is a different start date than our water year, which is October 1st. But, in all three places, up in the Gibraltar Reservoir, Kachuma Reservoir, and in downtown Santa Barbara, we've had above-normal rainfall. This is a chart showing Gibraltar Reservoir rainfall. And here, in the last five years, we've had very dry weather conditions, well below average. This is our current water year, and this hatched mark is the rain event over the President's Day weekend, when we received almost 10 inches of rainfall. And if we didn't have that one storm, we'd still be below-average rainfall. This is a chart of our Kachuma water storage. The green line is the storage during the last major drought period, from 1986 to 1993, is what's plotted. The black line is the current drought. And you can see, we tracked pretty closely to what we did last time, although this drought was more severe, it was drier, and it was longer. So I think we did pretty well in this drought. We also had more environmental requirements for flows released from the dam, so I think we've done quite remarkable with getting through this challenging period. This is when we had the February rain, and the reservoir went up 50 feet in one month. So now, we've basically rewound the clock back to where we were in 2014, when we started to declare the drought condition. So the drought has improved, but it's far from over. This is the U.S. Drought Monitor of California. It's put together by NOAA. And I wanted to call your attention to this, the note at the bottom that says, "The drought monitor focuses on broad-scale conditions, and local conditions may vary." So, this is important even within our county, which we're now shown as a moderate-level drought. North County is in a very different situation than South County. So, we are all still in emergency drought condition. All of our neighboring water agencies still have water use restrictions in place. Our demand status, this is our running average system demand. So in March, we had a 44% reduction from 2013 water use. That's pretty remarkable. At the time, we had a 40% conservation target in place, which has since been changed to 30%. And our cumulative savings is 37%. This is one of my favorite charts. So, this is our total water production going back to the 1980s. And this is where we were before the last drought. And then, there was a dramatic decline in water use with drought emergency declared. And then, once the drought was over, our water demand slowly returned over about a five-year period, but they never went back to what they were in the 1980s. They hovered about 20% lower than what they were before. And now, this is our current drought. This is what we've done over the last few years. Our community has really dramatically reduced their water use to the same point as the low point in the last drought. It's remarkable. So Gibraltar Reservoir is currently full. We've been diverting water since March, up to our monthly maximum limits. We're trying to use as much Gibraltar water as we can before the water quality changes. Typically, over the summer, it begins to degrade, so we're trying to maximize our use now while the water quality is really good. Our hydroelectric plant has been online since March 2nd, and in fact, we just received our first check from Edison. It was about $14,000 for the last month, which is great news. And Kachuma is at about 50% of capacity. We received a 40% allocation from the Bureau of Reclamation for this water year. Not all the water in Kachuma is project water. It's very complicated accounting with state water, and fish accounts, downstream water rights. And so, after we've subtracted out all of those other accounts, the 40% was what was remaining for the water supply this year. And we anticipate an allocation next year as well. Fish releases have resumed. National Marine Fisheries Service worked with the Bureau of Reclamation to begin fish releases. This was an issue last month. Because they had to use the Hilton Creek Emergency Backup System, it was going through our Bradbury Dam outlet works, which interrupted our state water deliveries temporarily. And CCWA has been working and has successfully now installed a bypass around the outlet works, so our state water deliveries have resumed. The emergency pumping barge has been dismantled. It's not expected to be needed until the summer of 2019. So, we have a plan in place in the event that we do need it a couple of years from now, if drought conditions continue. Imported water, as I mentioned, our state water deliveries have resumed to Kachuma as of April 14th. Central Coast Water Authority acted very swiftly to make that happen, so I'm grateful for their work. Our state water allocation has increased from 60% to 85%. Snowpack up north is 174% of normal, which has allowed the Article 21 deliveries to continue. That's basically free water when San Luis is spilling, so that's expected to continue through June. Our Metropolitan Water, the last estimate that we received for what we'll get back from that storage exchange was about 1,450 acre-feet, out of the roughly 4,500 that we put in. The numbers are still being reconciled, so we should get some news, I think, in the next month on what the final numbers are. This summer and fall, we'll have to consider what we do with our Table A water that's in San Luis, that's remaining in San Luis. We currently have enough water to keep the pipe to Kachuma flowing full, and we would likely have water carried over in San Luis. If we leave it there, it's at risk of spilling again, given the conditions. The San Luis reservoir is full right now, and the likelihood of spill is greater next year than it has been in previous years of drought. So, we're gonna-
Did we actually lose water on the San Luis deal?
Yes, we did. We did. The city moved 4,500 acre-feet of water into Metropolitan Water District's name.
Did we get half of that back, or a third of that back?
It's looking like about 1,400 acre-feet back.
Okay, yeah.
Correct. So, we'll be looking at whether we want to repay some of our water debt, or we could leave it in San Luis, but then it's at risk of spill next year. So, that's something we'll have to consider in the coming months. Our groundwater basins are currently resting. We've shut down all of our wells, as we are using our Gibraltar water. And both basins had remaining yields. They were at about 30% of capacity, so we're resting them now. And if the drought continues, we would have that supply available for later years. Desalination project, the major construction is complete. The startup and testing is underway. Seawater has been circulating through the plant since February of 2017, and the media filter is maturing as anticipated. It's almost complete. On April 21st, RO membranes are being loaded, and then, May 4th is the anticipated date to begin acceptance testing. So what that is, is we pretty much have all of our approvals from Division of Drinking Water, and if the water looks good, we could put it into the system, but it's usually a two-week process, so mid-May is when water would likely be going into the system. So, this project has been completed in less than two years from when the original authorization was given for design and construction. Water supply strategy, so this is something we talked about last month. We plan for continued drought conditions for a three-year outlook, and our current strategy is, has a conservation target of 30%. We've removed the lawn watering ban in our water use regulations, but we still encourage people to reduce their lawn watering to save water.
I think Mr. White had a question from earlier.
I do about a previous slide, and that is, the groundwater banking opportunities. I didn't hear, I heard the AVEC comment, but I didn't hear about-
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, thanks for bringing that up. We have a few options, which we could work with CCWA, Central Coast Water Authority. If we, if we, so we can either leave it in San Luis, to carry it over, and potentially it could spill. We could repay our water debt at AVEC, or we could put it into potential groundwater banking opportunities. CCWA has identified, I think, three opportunities. Irvine Ranch Water District being one of them. Because we have water debt, it's gonna be more cost-effective to pay back our water debt, rather than putting some of it into a groundwater bank. You typically don't get all the water back when you, and there's a cost associated with putting into the groundwater bank. So, for the city, it would be, we'd be looking to pay back our water debt first, and then, if we needed additional water next year, we would go back on the market again. So, I would recommend paying back the debt with AVEC if we have that opportunity.
And then, banking is something that, I mean, we're obviously getting the, we have many one-time or short-term expenses that have and are occurring, and then we have the launch of the DSAL as sort of our big pieces. However, in the longer term, banking is something that we still could use to fill that pipe, our state water pipe, is that right?
That's correct. It would make our state water more reliable. The idea is, when there's excess water that you can't use in the system, you park it in a groundwater bank somewhere, and then it's available for use later. Because we, I don't really see us having excess water until we pay off all of our debt, but at that point, I could see a groundwater banking option being a good way to improve long-term reliability of the system.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So this is our current water supply strategy. We're currently in year six, here's 2017. And one of the biggest changes this year with the rainfall that we had was that Gibraltar's now full, so that's this blue bar, the light blue bar, that was not previously available to us. And here we have our DSAL plant coming online this spring. We'll continue to use imported water and maximize our deliveries to Kachuma to maintain storage. And we've now shut down our groundwater wells, which is the yellow bar. So this yellow bar represents what we had already used to date, and then now we'll be reserving the remaining yields of the groundwater basins for use in 2019 if the drought continues. Any Kachuma allocations that we receive this year is basically contingency or backup supply, and most likely, we would carry it over to next year for meeting demands in next water year. I wanted to give you an update on Kachuma contract as it relates to our water supplies over the next few years. The current contract for Kachuma water supplies is between the County of Santa Barbara and the Bureau of Reclamation, and then there are five member units, including the city that subcontract with the county. It's a water supply contract, and the member units have borne the lion's share of the cost of the Kachuma project, even though the county is the master contract holder. The contract expires in 2020, and so the County Board of Supervisors will be discussing on May 2nd the contract renewal, and staff will be requesting authorization to formally request a new contract. There's a clause in the existing contract that requires a formal letter requesting renewal within two years of the contract's expiration. So, we had, at our Water Commission meeting on April 20th, we invited Tom Farrow, the Deputy Public Works Director from the County of Santa Barbara, to give a presentation on the contract renewal. And Water Commission's recommendation in that meeting was that council request the following at the County Board of Supervisors meeting, and it's really related to the process going forward. That city staff be included in all discussions with the Bureau, opposed to having the Bureau and the county meet without the member units and having information relayed back to us. They request that the process include meetings with the member unit officials, so that it's clear when meetings would occur prior to going to the Board of Supervisors, and that the process include weighted voting by the member unit elected officials for decision-making on the master contract. So the current process does not currently include any input from the governing bodies of the member units. So, there was not sufficient time for council action on this issue prior to May 2nd, giving an update, and let, staff plans to write a letter regarding the process, and we'll continue to discuss with the county. So this was an update on that issue.
Will you be including the Water Commission's comments in that letter?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Mr. White, did you have another question?
No, not a question, just a comment, but I can wait till after the presentation.
Okay.
All right, so Prop 1 Water Desalination Grant Program, we talked about this in the previous item. It's, the draft guidelines are released on April 3rd. It's up to $73 million available for construction projects, which is great news. The max project award would be $10 million. The city's desalination project, the 3125 acre-foot per year that's constructed, fulfills the goals and the priorities of the program to provide a drought supply. However, the guidelines were written such that there are eligibility concerns with the timing of our project. So, we are working on a comment letter requesting that the eligibility date go back to November of 2014, when Prop 1 was initially passed. And the comment period ends May 12th, with final guidelines expected in early June. So, this would be a big, this is a big deal to us, and we hope that they'll change the language. And now, I'll turn it over to our Madeline Ward, our water conservation supervisor.
I think just before we move on to the conservation, I'd like to comment on the contract. This is, this is a big deal. The county, this is very unusual in the West, that a county that is not a purveyor is the contractor with the Bureau of Reclamation. Water purveyors contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. And so, this is a, an isolation. The purveyors are isolated from the provider in this situation. And in this, and in this round in particular, the county has moved forward without advice and consent from the purveyors. There's been a coordinator hired, no, no input, no, just no engagement at all. And it's, the, the way it's proposed to go is basically shoving us aside, and us being the Carpinteria, Montecito, Santa Barbara, Galita purveyors. So, it's, it really is important that we gain some kind of foothold here, again, we collectively, and hopefully can get, get a place at the table, both to, both participate in the discussions and have a, have a say in, in what's decided. So, the letter is, is one step, and I think that lobbying with our supervisors is another one, where I think that we can make a difference. I'm hoping that we can make a difference. What we've seen, for example, is the weighted voting issue is one where we see it in some places, and we don't see it in others. Obviously, there's, there's, on one extreme, there's, at CCWA, at COME, and at Kachuma Conservation and Release Board, the larger water users have more say than the small ones. At SB CAG, everybody gets the Santa Barbara and has the same vote as a very small, and like Guadalupe. So, it's, there's a fairness issue here, important fairness issue, and I think it's one where, I think that the city should weigh in with our supervisors to gain some of the traction that's proposed here in this letter. And I certainly am game to participate in that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Madeline Ward. I'm the Water Conservation Supervisor, and I'm gonna share a few water conservation updates with you. So every year, the city sponsors a special award at the Santa Barbara County Science Fair, along with the county water agency and the other water providers. And this is to award a project, or multiple projects, that address water scarcity, water resource management, or water conservation. This year's winner was Nev Greenwald of Lockalina Junior High, and she had a project in which she measured the rate of evaporation on various hard surfaces to find the optimal rain collection and retention systems. We also had two runners-up. We had Emily Doring, also of Lockalina Junior High, who had a project in which she created a water sill to evaporate and purify salt water. And Noah Wetzel of Galita Valley Junior High had a project in which he tested various soil types to see which retained the most water, and thus could lead to reduced irrigation. So congratulations to our local budding water scientists. I also wanted to remind everyone about the connection between power outages and sprinkler timers. Edison has been doing work around the city last week, and I believe this week will continue some more work, and some customers may experience power outages. I know it did at my house. So, one little unknown fact is that these sprinkler timers, although they are connected to your power outlet, behind that panel is a D battery that remembers all of your programs if your power does go out. What we commonly find is that the D battery is either missing, or it may be dead. So, the programs will be erased, and it will go on a default program that will water your landscape every day, every start time, every program, for 10 minutes at midnight. This will often double or triple water bills. So, just like with your smoke alarms, it's a good idea, when you're checking your smoke alarms, to make sure that you either have a battery, and that it's a still active battery, and replace it if it's dead. And then, if you do experience a power outage, make sure you check your timer and make sure your programs are still there, and that it's not on default watering. We also have some upcoming classes. We have Graywater 101 on Tuesday, May 2nd, and Rainwater Harvesting on Thursday, May 11th. Both of these classes are from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, and they take place at the Mackenzie Park Adult Building. They are taught by Sweetwater Collaborative and sponsored in part by the city. And more information on those classes can be found at our website. And we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Why don't we go to Mr. Walker, and then we'll bring it all back to council, so come on up.
Good afternoon again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. A quick point in history, when the Mission Tunnel bore was punched through, I think in 1910, that allowed for development of the Upper Riviera area, excuse me, and Gibraltar Dam itself was not completed until 1920. They had a, they pulled off from construction during World War I. So, excuse me, you know, there's been a long, long history of water development in this area, and that whole thing with the pump zone versus a non-pump zone, it's a history taking place right now, again. Okay, the one good thing about the DSAL plant, and it's like my house, I have a earthquake insurance seismic rider on it, I pay for it, and it gives you an assuredness of survivability to some degree. The same thing for that DSAL plant. I hear it a lot, oh, it's all this money being pumped into it, but, you know, who was it? Alan Greenspan said, you know, "We can guarantee you dollars, but we can't guarantee you the purchase price." And what you're seeing today with 70 million back in 1990 would be approximately 20 million of the 35 expended. So, you gotta look at the inflation value of what your buyers, excuse me, your dollars bought then, and what they buy now. But, from the top-down of the state water project, the Keystone, Capstone, Cornerstone, Orville Dam, and what's going on up there, there's a bit of unknowns involved. The delta can be seismically compromised with the levees. Again, the San Andreas Rift Zone cuts across the mid-state area around Park Field, and that's where our California Aqueduct and the coastal branch takes off from it. So, then you could have a problem with the Teca Lodi Tunnel being seismically compromised, and/or even Lake Kachuma, the right abutment. That's where the San Andres Fault runs right underneath it. So, you know, that DSAL plant, in my book, is great, great insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's to the council. I'll just mention, you mentioned, Ms. Stier mentioned it earlier, that Mr. Casey and I had an opportunity to speak with State Senator Hannah Beth Jackson on Friday on a number of things, and this was a big topic of conversation. I know our water staff and her staff have been going back and forth for several weeks now, and she's, I want to commend her leadership and work on this to, she was under the impression that the draft guidelines would be all ready and great, and worked with DWR quite a bit in making sure our facility could qualify. So hopefully, we'll get that cleared up, but she has been very proactively forthright on this, so I want to thank her for that. On the other issue, Mr. White, I would suggest, assuming the item at the county is in the morning and not during council session, that if you could attend and speak at the hearing would probably be a good idea, just at least in the concept of having the water purveyors be, play a role. You are our water liaison, basically, so that would, that was why I was, and you mentioned it, so that would be my suggestion. So, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I have a sort of a tangential issue, but I think it's important to bring it up. There's been a lot of discussion about State Street and economic vitality on the street, and I've heard from a lot of the property owners and the businesses on the street that they think that they need to wash the sidewalks more aggressively, wash, power-wash the buildings, as part of an effort to clean things, in addition to all, a number of other strategies to address economic vitality, and that, you know, our policies and approach to the drought, while critical at the time, have an unintended consequence in regards to that issue. And so, I think I'd just like to put that on the table, have staff think about it, have council think about it. I don't think it's anything that has to be resolved the next month, but it's certainly something we should begin to be, give some attention to, because I think there's gonna be an increasing interest in, in doing some cleaning on State Street, and it's gonna take some water. And in the context of the actual supply for the city, this is one of those facts versus perception problems. You know, the amount of water we're talking about is insignificant, but the, the optics of it are challenging, perhaps. So, I just want to put that on the plate.
Could we hear from Mr. Casey on that? I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Casey?
Completely agree. Already initiating conversations about that. There's also a health and safety issue about power washing the sidewalks that I think can, can fit in here as well, so agree, and we're gonna follow up on that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we don't need a motion on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
May it rain, and, it doesn't really rain in May, but we'll see, you never know, could happen. happen.
It rained on our Kachuma tour.
Yes, I actually, I want to thank Ms. Stire. We, so U.S. Conference of Mayors had a, as I think was mentioned last week, this Water Policy Council meeting, and Ms. Stire had a great, gave a great tour on Lake Kachuma, and we got soaked. And it rained. It was very beautiful at the beginning. I'm glad we took-
Including arranging rain, I think it was.
Yes, I'm glad we took the group photo before we got on the boat, not at the end of the trip, because that would not have been nice. But, but thank you for all of your work making that happen.
Thank you.
Okay.